That's what this is. Rough on us.
I'll meet Ted and rise.
Okay, welcome everybody to the Villarica Planning Commission's meeting today. It is August the 6th, 2019. This is a call to order. And first up is the adoption of the agenda. Everybody got a copy?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Should we separate the annexation and the rezoning on the property? Or can those both be done at the same time?
It's, of course, the commission's choice. Can you hear me? Which is?
Yeah.
Hello? Okay. So it's, of course, the commission's decision. However, Sammy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. There has to be two separate votes that would have to be done. One for the annexation and one for the rezoning. Right?
That's right, but it's important to remember, I mean, we're going to be rezoning property that is a part of the city. So, you know, the annexation, I imagine, would go first.
Yeah. That was my question.
It's appropriate, I think, if we do it that way. The annexation first, then the rezoning question.
Okay.
With that, I move approval of the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Agenda is approved. Next is old business. Everybody got a copy of the minutes?
Yes, sir. Obviously, no.
Okay. Any corrections, or do I have a motion to approve the minutes of June the 4th?
I move approval of the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the June 4th minutes. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? All right. That would be unanimous, well, three plus...
I have to abstain. I wouldn't hear.
I have to abstain. The new B.
I don't think I could vote on that. I wasn't here to...
That's right.
Hear it.
Okay. All right, next up is new business.
All right, we have an annexation of Popeyes, or proposed Popeyes, for our 50.04 acre property on Highway 61 and Hickory Level Road. This property and the purpose of this annexation is to take advantage of the city's water and sewer facilities and water and sewer connections. The rezoning itself, there was no real detriments that we could find in our staff report. You could see that we compared the various different comprehensive plan policies to ensure that there would be no adverse effect on the surrounding areas. It's a very commercial corridor, as you familiar, and we could not identify anything. There's land uses that are surrounding it that are all mostly a part of the city, they'll say. Not all of the areas that are directly adjacent to this property are. Of course, all the areas east of Highway 61 are actually a part of the city in this particular section of Villarica. And the sections to the west of the properties coming from Hickory Level Road are all in the county, so as well as this piece. So we are recommending an approval for the annexation.
Okay.
I have a question. I did not receive the complete package. I'm missing pages two and four of this. Did everybody else get a complete copy?
I'm at the office.
Page one, page three, and then page five. So I did not have the staff approval. Okay. If you didn't get these, I'm not sure that the commission has had adequate chance to consider this. Did you get it, Seth?
I got my package.
So you got pages two and five?
No. Pages three.
The backside's in your copy. The backside's in your copy.
Three and five.
How about you?
So I'm trying to find. Authorization, foresight. Mm-mm. Don't see it.
So apparently, none of us got a complete back...
So this is what you're looking for, this page? But, yeah, I've only got three pages on there.
It's the back of each page. It was a front and back on the original, but we didn't get front and back. We only got the front.
Okay.
Now, that being said, I'm not sure there's not enough for us to make a...
Well, not for running Mac online.
A decision, but...
Yeah. Okay. Well, yeah, gotta have the info before you can do anything. And this is tied to annexation and...
Right, and the rezoning.
And the rezoning. Yep. All right. Is there a recommendation?
I think from a legal perspective, it's just a discretionary question as to how the board wants to proceed. You know, if you want to take some time to read it, if it raises any questions for you, I don't think that's going to keep you from proceeding tonight.
Do we have the copies right here?
Yeah, I'm reading the back pages right now.
Okay. I don't have it. If anybody else has a copy.
We'll provide copies of the entire full staff report again. I think they, I think all the other commissioners have had them now, as of now, but I think we just need one more for you.
Okay.
Is it appropriate to table this until the next meeting?
Hello, there we go. Thank you. It's not color, Matthew. Gotta have fun when you're doing this stuff. Here we go. See, y'all can just go ahead and look on Facebook for a while and...
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah.
The application I read, it mentions that it's for a quick service restaurant. You mentioned that being Popeyes, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. The remaining 49 acres or so, it does not designate what it's intended for. It says future development by others. Are we going to somehow keep that in the same quick service mill? What comes to what sort of limitations we're going to place on that other 49? Because Popeyes can't take up, what, an acre? Unless they have the world's largest parking lot. So what's with the other 49 acres? What we're going to do with it?
So the applicant actually did not indicate what the rest of that would be.
Do we think we should ask?
You very well can. The applicant's here tonight.
There you go. Oh, good. Let me make this formal. So those who are in favor of this proposal, please step forward. Give us your name and address and why we should consider this proposal. There you go.
Hey, guys, my name's Connor Patton. I'm with Foresight Group. Will be the civil engineer on this property if it goes into development. With me is Derek Oberschall with CSE Properties. He's the developer. We are helping the seller of this property annex and rezone all 50 acres of the site, but Derek's intent is to only purchase a little less than one acre of the site. So we will be doing the development for the Popeyes on the far northeast corner for the site plan that we submitted. The remaining 49 acres will be remaining with the current property owner for now and to be developed by others.
And is that Babu Enterprises LLC? Is that who we're talking about? Mr. Mish Shish Patel?
Yes, sir.
Is he here?
No, he's not.
So we can't ask him what he's going to do with the rest of it? Have you asked him what he's going to do with the rest of it?
Well, he's interested in rezoning it for some sort of commercial use in a commercial corridor. This would make his property more valuable, the remainder of his property. But at this point, I don't know what uses he has for it.
Well, why don't we just sever it and zone an acre instead of the whole 50? Is there a need for the whole 50, for this restaurant?
When we came and met with the city planning department, it was kind of discussed upon, do we separate and then rezone and annex our one acre? Or do we go and do all 50? We thought it'd be beneficial to do all 50, and that was their recommendation.
Beneficial to whom?
Sorry?
Beneficial to whom? You, your customer, us, the city?
The city, tax dollars, benefit us. We're going to have to go to multiple road hearings down the road for that and just do it once for all the 50 acres.
Okay.
This is, 50 acres include that big dump area on the south end of that that's being used for fill and whatever?
Yes, sir.
So this is included in the 50 acres?
Yes, sir.
That's Jerry Tovar's property. And a prior project that fell through down there was the Kroger.
Right, no, I understand that.
Yeah, that's Jerry's property.
They're going to...
Who's down below?
Right. Okay. Well, I just wish we were able to attract some businesses to Villarica other than fast food, but be that as it may. That's a good area for it, I guess.
Gentlemen, as you read through the application here, one thing that I will add in terms of the legal requirements for annexation is that if you, is that the property that you're annexing has to have a area that's contiguous to the rest of the municipality? So were we to just annex the southwest corner, I'm not sure how that would affect whether or not that parcel is contiguous with the rest of the municipality. By looking at this map here, I can't tell which part of this zone is where the Popeyes would be.
Well, with the Chevrolet is, what the Chevrolet dealership does is within the city, is it not across the street? And 61, is that not city property? So it would be contiguous to 61. I mean, in the city, 61's right there is city property. So, I mean, I think it's...
It's a consideration. I just want to make sure that it gets brought up.
I understand, and it costs the applicant more to sever it. I understand that they have surveys, and I'm not trying to make anybody pay any extra money, but, I mean, I don't have a problem changing the property if it's their property and changes, but the question comes, what are you going to do with the other 49? If they were going to use 25 acres, that'd be a little less question, but you're going to sever off an acre of it and another 49 gets the benefit of the city and the water and sewage. Now, they're going to pay for it, obviously. We just, as a citizen, like to know what they're going to do with it. I think citizens will want to know what the plan is. If they have a plan, if they don't, then that's okay, too. We're just, I think, got to ask the question.
Were y'all able to read the two pages?
Okay. Yeah, I read the back.
Yeah, me, too. Okay. All right. Any other questions for the applicants? Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come up here and whoever's for this project would like to speak their mind? Nope?
Commission? Hello?
No.
Not really, ma'am.
Hello?
There you go. Now it's hot.
Really close, okay.
No singing.
All right, well, as y'all know, Matthew Momtahan, Villarica City Council, represent Ward Two. This project is in my ward. I came up here in the in favor portion because generally I am in favor of this development and the annexation of the 50 total acres. Actually, Kurt, let me ask, are we going to have another public hearing today on the rezoning portion, or we're just doing the annexation right now?
Both.
Okay, so we're doing both right now, right?
Yeah, annexation first and then rezoning.
So this, what I'm doing right now is appropriate. All right. One of these to Ms. Pilgrim, so she can put that in the record. And I have some extras up here if you want to take a look at what I'm talking about. Well, again, like I said, this is in my ward, so I'm pretty excited about it. I'm excited also that we finally have some general movement on this project. I get this question all the time, what's going over there in the hole, what's going over there in the hole? And I keep having to tell people, that hole is not even in the city yet. But now I can finally tell them, assuming this annexation gets passed, that the hole is now in the city. All right, as to the, and so in that regard, this parcel will have a lot of attention paid to it. Everybody knows it's the potential Kroger, and if you go to Sofran's website, they've taken the Kroger label off the plan, but it still has a large tenant there. So since I believe that this development will set the tenor for future development down 61, south to the city limits towards Carrollton, I feel strongly about some particular items about it. And therefore, I would like to propose some stipulations to this zoning that I hope the commission will consider. The first one, being that applicant, owner, developer agrees to construct building facades of masonry or glass. You can see an example, if you go to the Popeyes in Hiram, also in Douglasville, of where they've done this. Applicant, owner, developer agrees to submit a landscape plan, which at a minimum includes a landscape strip adjoining the Hickory Level Road right away and the Georgia Highway 61 right away, and plantings within the parking lots to break up some of the large parking lots. Now, the Popeyes itself may not have to do those plantings with the parking lots. We'll see what their landscape plan does, but if we do have the rest of the 48, 49 acres, that would be something that I would like to see. You can see an example of that in Carrollton. Applicant, owner, developer agrees to install sidewalks to provide interparcial and intraparcial pedestrian traffic. Once again, you can see an example of that at the Carrollton location. Applicant, owner, developer agrees to design the parking lot and drives to provide for interparcial and intraparcial vehicular traffic, vehicular traffic, excuse me, including stub streets and, if feasible, an access road. Something similar to what we have over here, the Commerce Drive area, that'll help alleviate future traffic burdens. Of course, I'm assuming that GDOT will have to review any long-term plans for the project, so they may require that themselves. Again, you can see an example of that at the Carrollton location. That location is, I believe, there's an access road that runs close to or parallel to it, and they also have a ride-in, ride-out, but of course, that's also a divided highway there, 127. Applicant, owner, developer agrees to submit a master signage plan, which encourages the use of ground-mounted monument signs, particularly for the single-tenant parcels within the development. So those are the kinds of things that I would like to see out of this project. Like I said, it is going to be, it's going to set the tenor for the future development down the road, so I want to see something high-quality. Villarica as a city has moved beyond, I believe, being the pit stop off 520. We are a community, and we expect that owners and developers who want to come to the city and make an income and make money off our residents and passersby treat us the same way they do in these other communities that have heightened development standards. So, again, generally, I'm in favor. That's why I'm up here in the favor portion. I hope the commission will consider adopting these stipulations, and if anybody would like to talk to me before and after, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, anyone else in favor?
Hello, I'm Jay Davis. I'm developing the adjacent property that's coming up really soon, or one of the adjacent properties, and I'd like to voice my support for the development down the Highway 61 corridor. And I'd also like to remind the city that should the Gold Nugget Trail actually be developed, some of it may in fact go through this property, and to not forget about that as you're considering the annexation and/or zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go in once, go in twice. All right, at this time, is there anyone that is not in favor of this project? Please step forward. No takers? Last chance. Okay, at this part of this meeting, the public section is closed. Any other further discussion with staff? Or any recommendations?
I move we approve the annexation of this proposed 50-acre lot to the city of Villarica.
Okay. We have a motion to approve this annexation. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the annexation. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Annexation is approved for nothing. Or unanimous? All right. So we're going to do the rezoning next. Okay.
The proposed property, again, for the record, Hickory Level Road at Highway 61. The property is being proposed for the GC Zone, a general commercial, which is directly in correlation with the other surrounding zones to the north, the Lee Chevrolet, and the east, as well across Highway 61. The section of the city, one of the furthest south sections of the city that is contiguous to this property is actually a rural development, R D, that's directly to the south. It's a relatively small lot that's there. And to the west is office and institutional in one small section. You actually were to look at your map on page one of the staff report. On Paris Drive, the first three lots on the right side of that road, the, that would be the east side of the road, those three lots are within the city limits, and that's actually both of zone currently office institutional. All the other lots that are directly adjacent to this parcel are all in the county, and that is a manufactured home subdivision. So, being that this property doesn't actually run on Paris Drive, it runs on Highway 61 and on Hickory Level, all of that area is commercial, and it's in kind of what they are currently zoning.
But one of the comments on the page that I did not receive says that this proposed zoning is not consistent with the comprehensive plan under future land use map.
Right, so the future land use plan describes suburban village as a future land use. So the intent of suburban village is to create nodes in the areas where potential for future development exists, and to create a community crossroads. So the comprehensive plan mentions multiple different zones that would accomplish that goal, mostly being really suburban in nature, the R20 Zone, RT, RD, PD, NC. So some of them, it gets into some commercial zones towards the end there, NC and OI, but it does not mention the GC Zone. So the comprehensive plan, I'm not sure why they would not include the general commercial zone. That kind of does, that does create nodes, does create commercial activity, and we have that in a large amount of the city already at a lot of our commercial establishments.
And it's general commercial versus heavy commercial and that type of thing?
Right, or in this case, neighborhood commercial.
Right, right. Okay.
And also, just to add to that, being that the first three lots on Paris Drive are zoned O and I, I'm not sure how they're able to create a node. This property is, would really be required for that. This is the one that's on the corner. Zoning it as O and I would not really be consistent with Popeyes Restaurant, of course, or any sort of large retail establishment. It would really be, general commercials really was for that, and the rest of the area is correct zone.
Okay. All right, all right.
Question two on this map. These maps are very confusing. This map of the annexation we just made, the Popeyes is just this upper corner, right?
It should be the northeast corner, there's a corner to the property, not the northwest.
Just this corner.
Yes, sir.
And all of these, what are the designation of all of these properties to the left that are designated still BAPU Enterprise? Are they part of this, are they adjacent to this 50 acres?
They are adjacent to their own parcels themselves, their own lots, but they do have the same owner. When we were sending out the notices, for example, for this application, there's a lot of lots here that all had the same owner, Babu Enterprise, but they're not a part of this application.
Let me ask you, what are those Babu Enterprise? What are they zoned behind it?
So the first three...
I guess the question is, what would keep them from just extending the trailer bar? We go mobile home, manufactured trailer bar. What keeps them from expanding Ridgeline all the way to the highway? I guess is the question. You get a lot of mobile homes for 49 acres.
That's not something that's permitted. Mobile homes are not permitted in Villarica at all.
But they're not permitted on the O and I, but you just said there are always some there, are you not?
No, those lots are actually vacant. The lots to the south of those three are the ones that have the manufactured homes on them.
Okay. Again, so you're telling me, what would keep them from running manufactured homes to the other 49 acres?
It's not permitted in general commercials, not permitted in the city at all.
Okay.
But that area to the left, which are designated as individual lots and are not part of this annexation, could do what Mac is suggesting?
Only the lots that are not in the city limits, the...
Yeah, that's all of those listed down the side.
Not all of them. The first three are zoned O and I, and that's within the city's limits. The ones south of that are all not in the city's limits, they're in county, and they are permitted there.
Well, I feel uncomfortable with this area not being known as to what the developments are going to be. Now, I suppose we could make an amendment to a motion that any development that they bring forward has to come back for reconsideration. But, you know, to Mac's point, it is kind of flopping around right now.
I guess they would have to apply for any sort of, I mean, we're all Carlos, I mean, just, I guess, play devil's advocate to my own argument, is they would have to apply for any sort of permit to build anything. I mean, while it'd be general commercial, it'd still have to come before us, again, to make an...
And that's some of the limitations. We're not giving them just...
Carton line.
This is a zoning question, but if they're going to build, they still have to apply for the building permit. If there's going to be a development, there's still more that needs to go into that. This is step one, it's just the zoning piece.
Yeah. I think with the annexation, bigger issue, once the city owns it, then I would rather have them control it to what it's going to be. And I think the general commercial, I think they would have greater limitations or preparation. You'd have to know what it was. It's usually a more highly-funded building, so, okay. I did want to ask one question. No, this may not apply. I'm sorry, I may have backed up. I saw that there was a site requirement or a building rendering on the backside, the last two pages of this. Has that something that you have seen, has the city seen what they're going to build? Do you have a rendering of the building? Have they seen a rendering? That's something you looked at beforehand? The renderings?
I have not seen a rendering, no, but the applicant has prepared one.
This may answer some of Mr. Momtahan's questions as well. I'm all for industry and folks having a job, so let's take a look. I like chicken, so this may be a win-win.
It pretty much looks like most of the other Popeyes that I've seen.
Looks similar.
It pretty much looks like most of the other Popeyes that I've seen.
Looks similar.
It looks like any other Popeyes.
Alright, any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you much.
Thanks, sir.
Alright, at this time, anyone who is in favor of this proposal, please step forward. Tell us why we should consider it. For the rezoning.
Well, here, I thought, I thought that was appropriate earlier. So, I'll just use the term that I'm sure Sam and Mac are familiar with. Everything I said earlier, I incorporate here and by reference as it fully set forth again. I will also add that the architectural that's been submitted here is stucco. So, that's, again, I would prefer a masonry or, masonry or brick construction with some glass, but that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Alright. At this time, is there anyone who is against this proposal of rezoning? No takers? Okay, the public section is closed. Do I have any recommendations?
I move approval of the zoning, this is to Q C.
To G C.
To Q C.
G C.
G C, oh, I'm sorry, G C.
Yes.
Move approval of the rezoning to G C with the following stipulations, that we include the comments that Mr. Montahan made, and that any future development of this fifty acres, the applicant must come back before planning and zoning.
We have a motion to approve this rezoning with the stipulations as stated by Matthew Montahan, and also that the applicant would return for the remainder acres in front of this board. Do I have a second?
I will second only to a point, I'd say, any applicant, not just this applicant. I believe any applicant coming forward.
So noted. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? There we go. Alright. Motion carries. This will go to the City Council, which is meeting next Tuesday.
No, this will be on the August twenty, twenty seven.
August twenty-seventh, here before the City Council, because they have the final say-so. They will receive our recommendations, but they will be the final judge. So, don't miss it, be there. Next up? Was it the Abmore presentation?
Yes, so, we're gonna have a presentation tonight on the Abmore development. If you recall, this development came before this commission back in December of two thousand and eighteen. And is a, a relatively large development off of Highway sixty-one. And developers here to further clarify, if you have any comments on it, there has been some changes from the last plan that you've seen. And it's a total of, uh, two twenty, thank you, two hundred and twenty acres total. So, I'm just kinda passing off to the developer.
Okay. And just for clarification, this is just strictly a presentation? We're not having to rule or just, okay. That's cool.
Thank you, everybody. Good to see y'all again. I hope I be back in six months instead of seven. So, I apologize, you're thirty days behind the curve there. First of all, let me introduce myself. My name's Jay Davis. I'm the developer of the property in question, in front of you today. I own the property already, this is not a contract I'm flipping. I have a whole bunch of my own money in it already, and a bunch of time over the last three and a half years helping develop the property. So, we've tried to bring you today enough information so that you don't have to approve it with wondering what the heck happened. We tried to be very specific. Back in December, when we presented the project to you, and Mac, I think you weren't here then, welcome. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
The project that was approved then had a concept, and it was a pretty picture. And I, I think if you'll remember, we presented a picture that would include a senior living community, that would include some residential housing for intergenerational housing, that would include some medical, that would include some office and retail as well. What we've got in front of you today, and I think y'all have zoning books, is a presentation of the plan development as it has been enhanced and specifically laid out by both architects and engineers since we met seven months ago. So, I, I know that y'all will have some specific questions, and I brought the architects here with me tonight. It's Pulliam and Reinhardt, they did the land use planning out at Saranby. They've done quite a bit more over at Pinewood Studios at the neighborhoods there. They're very familiar with this kind of newer rhythm development that includes mixed-use type housing, commercial, retail, and medical. So, we've brought in the experts. We've also used the land use architects at THW Design in Atlanta who do a lot of senior care all around the country. In fact, they're the biggest ones in the country. We've had the business plan reviewed and enhanced by Dixon Hughes Goodman, which is one of the lead accounting firms in the country for senior housing. And we've had a market study done, which is a part of the original proposal by Glenn Evans, which is a part of Brooks Adams. They do national marketing campaigns and market studies for life care communities all over the country. They're very, very familiar with the metrics. So, what we have in front of you is a project that's been put together by a team of experts for our local use. Let me remind you while we're here to begin with. We're here because I'm the county administrator and conservator for Douglas County, which is Billerica that I'm a part of, I live just across the line. And as I threw into that job over the course of many years, it became evident that we didn't have adequate, and I don't mean inferior, I mean enough, housing for seniors in our area that was affordable. I have to send people to Gwinnett County, I have to send them to Coweeda County, I have to send them up to Cobb County in order to have housing that they can afford. So, the original purpose of the project, and the reason I was able to acquire it, was to do a senior housing community. That is the lifeblood and the heart of the community that you have designed in front of you. We've designed in a hundred and ninety units in phase one. That would include independent living, assisted living, and memory care. And if you're unfamiliar with the term, let me just remind you that independent living is for folks who want a place to live, who have access to meal plans and services, but it's more like a regular apartment with an R A at the end of the hall if you need it. The assisted living is actual nursing in this case. So, the state of Georgia changed the code a few years ago to include actual nursing care available up to state shoe pressure bandages that would be available in assisted living. Those folks are trained, they're hired, they're employees of the community, which is, will bring several hundred jobs here to the community when we do this. And then the memory care portion is for those folks who don't have access to their memories. They don't remember who they are, they don't remember how to active, be a part of the active society. So, the independent living part of this is about thirty acres in the heart of it, and that includes green space and some other amenities as well. And I'll lay those out for you in phase one and phase two of that. Around it, we wanted to have, and the concept is that we have intergenerational housing. So, that, that means it's not all fifty-five and up. It means it's for whoever would like to have the opportunity to have a house in the neighborhood and have mama next door, or grandma. Or just people who wanna live in this type of mixed-use community where they have access to all the amenities, which will be the regular stuff, which is pool and, and stores and retail and, and community things. But it's also a very walkable community. That's the design behind it all. The, the number one amenity across the nation that any community asks for is walking access and pedestrian friendliness. So, doesn't matter whether you think pickleball, or tennis, or basketball, or swimming, or the big things, in, in consideration with how that ranks with walking, walking's number one. So, we've designed this as a very walkable community, from the sidewalks and the trails, all the way to the access, the Gold Nugget Trail that's designed right through the middle of this thing. It's all designed for pedestrian friendliness, access, and health and well-being for the community, not only at large, within the two hundred and twenty acres, but through the Gold Nugget Trail, the public will have access to the V Plex Park, which is adjacent to us, and on the other end, as it gets developed, hopefully by the neighborhood who just got approved over there, the balance of the trail going into the city. So, that's the kind of community we've designed. We've also put at the front of it, the commercial part is designed to have a park square right in the middle of it, that's a reminder of the historic nature of the property. The old farmhouse will be remodeled and rebuilt, so will the barn, so will the livery stable. We'll have a farmer's market right there in the middle of the town square that all of this is built around, that reflects on the historic nature of the Goldworth Farm, which is the Williams family that's been here for two hundred years. So, we're gonna include all of that in this development as it stands, and I'll be doing that as a part of the amenities package for the whole. The nonprofit lady who sold it to me, she will be running the actual nonprofit that keeps all that up. So, I'm not putting it on the city to maintain, it'll be maintained by the nonprofit. The medical piece, we've already been in, as I told you last time, will include an urgent care facility. It'll also include, at this point, we're in discussions for primary care as well as extra medical office building type activities that would go along with it. So, that'll be a significant piece of the puzzle. As I discussed with you last time, we've already been invited, we've already invited the YMCA to participate. They have agreed that if we'll arrange to have the building financed, they'll come and manage all of the operations of the facility and open it to the public at large, so that not just the folks in our community, but the public within the whole region can actively participate in the why that's on this property. So, from the beginning, we've designed this to be a community-friendly, walk-friendly, health-friendly type community for all the folks who live here. And we think we brought the design team together in such a way that you won't have to have the kinds of concerns you were just discussing about the quality of the building frames, how they're put together, and, and the different issues that go along with that. You'll see all of that that's outlined in the zoning book attached. I've got some specific issues that I wanna address tonight that the city is, by the way, they've been great. The city staff, and Tom, and Bobby Elliott, and all the, all the folks involved have been really great about helping us craft this community-wide programming that's gonna helpfully, hopefully be put together in a way that you guys can all appreciate. Some of the questions are related to the conceptual plan that we have in front of you versus the initial one that we did. The, the, the one that we initially put in front of you seven months ago was kind of a wish list. It was general in nature. And part of the reason that it wasn't approved at the time, I think, was because it was too general. To your point about what's gonna happen on the commercial acreage, we have specifically laid out in lots that are in front of you in the zoning book and on the major maps, where each house would go, what the size of the housing is, what the size of the lot is, what the use is. There won't be any front-loaded garages, it'll all be alley-fed to, in keeping with that pedestrian-friendly nature of the community, sidewalks outside everybody's front door, not cars backing out into the main roads. The other specific things that have changed about the plan is we have specifically laid out where all the amenities go, what the walk-in trails look like, how the Gold Nugget Trail that the city has already approved intermingles with the community. You'll see that we have a bunch of tree-lined streets throughout. You'll see that we have a bunch of other zoning restrictions laid out in our general map and in the zoning book. You'll also see that we have specifically laid out some of the amenities. There's a pool, there's a horse park, there's a, a regular park, there's walk-in trails, there's the civilian conservation corps ruins, and some adjacent amenities there. All of it, again, is walkable, and we've designed it so that that Gold Nugget Trail that winds through here is not just a place for people to go through, it's an integral part of the community. We've made it so that the folks who have homes facing the trail actually look out upon it. Will see across it to the creek side. So, it's designed to be an integral part of the community, not just a pass. So, that's the difference between the conceptual plan and this one. In regard to the building types, we've provided you some pictures in your zoning book of what the conceptual buildings would look like. Those are, let's see. This one, which is a view of the, the square, the farmer's market there on the right and the, and the three-story building surrounding the square. That's all designed to bring, give you the impression that it's a walkable type place, that it's intended that the park be a part of the community right there at the heart of it, and that the other retail, and to your point about stucco versus vinyl, it's brick, it's stone, it's steel, it's, it's wood, it's really nice finishes. Another one of the pictures that's included in your package is of the multifamily places within the, within the community itself. They're designed to be, look as if it's a old townscape with the kinds of housing and, and walkability that you'd want if you were a part of it. And then the last one is, the last picture that we've provided is the types of cottage homes that you're facing around a community green that will allow you to live there and look across the green at your neighbor, not have to go down the street, you know, two hundred yards and say hello. So, this is designed to be a livable community where people actually know one another. Let's see. We've got the zoning book in front of you, and I, I know there's some specifics about that. Am I still limited to ten minutes, or do y'all want me to keep going? I can shut up if you want me to.
Well, it's a presentation, so it's not like?
Oh, so I get to talk? Alright, I'll shut up when you want me to, that's fine. I'm gonna have at the end, if you have questions, my architect here specifically to answer questions about the zoning, and that's pretty important. We have put in front of you a plan development zoning book. It differs from the city's regular zoning standards in that it's both more flexible and also more strict. We've tried to make it to where all the finishes are really high-end, where the design goes together well for livability and community standards. It's designed to go to, in other words, it's supposed to be, and is in the zoning book, well thought out. It's not some general standard that applies to everyone. This is specific to this community, and it's designed specifically for that. And my architect here answered questions if you have those. One of the things, reasons that that's important is because this community is designed to bring to you, us, the community, the kind of development that we really wanna set the standard going forward. I think Mira Lake guys did a good job twenty years ago of actually bringing some reasonable stuff to the city that wasn't just, you know, pump 'em and dump 'em on the, on the regular kind of single-family suburb, I mean suburban neighborhoods. They actually put some thought into it, and today it looks pretty decent. We are trying to improve upon that model and bring an even nicer design ethic to it. We had the market study done, as I mentioned earlier, about the seniors and the need for housing for seniors. The report that was included in the earliest application, and I will bring you a physical copy myself if I need to, says that essentially, you know, within our region, which goes from Ostell all the way down to Noonan, essentially, there's a few personal care homes, there are a few assisted living centers, there's some senior housing, but what there's not is a coordinated place where folks can live together throughout the spectrum. That, that is included in, within the community, and that, that's a very important piece of what we're doing. They said there's room for over a thousand different, there's a need for, not room for, a need for housing for seniors up to a thousand within the market study that they supplied. And specifically for folks seventy-five and over, it was over seven hundred and fifty. So, there is quite a need for this within the community itself. So, that market study's done and available if you need to see it. We had a traffic study done. You know, some of the questions for these kinds of things relate to how traffic will be impacted. So, our traffic study that the city has available, that you have available if you need it, showed that there's fourteen thousand seven hundred cars a day on the days that were examined by Wilburn Engineering, the engineering group that did the study, and that our neighborhood would add to that some traffic. They recommended a second entrance, which we provided in the drawing, but that it would not be a negative impact on the community, that the two would be enough. One of the things that our drawing shows is that I have neighbors through which I can negotiate other exits, for exits and entrances up to a total of six.
What about traffic lights, who talked, do you tell you that's something that's a possibility?
Wilburn Engineering has already spoken to the DOT, and they're amenable to a traffic light discussion. We have John Bass with Georgian West Engineering arranging that with Wilburn Engineering. They'll meet with the DOT to get that handled. We don't know what the specific outcome will be, but we have been in front of it, and they have said verbally, yeah, we think that'll be okay, we'll figure it out.
Alright, Jay, I know I'm new to this game, but I've, I've read this, I'm super excited, super excited. Because I think this is the kind of thing we need, but I do have some questions. These may be more city council questions than planning and zoning, but?
Okay.
When I look at the residential data on the left, being a homeowner here, in a single-family home and, and owning homes here, I look at, we've got three hundred and three total multifamily, and only two twenty-two total single-family. Now, I'm questioning, is the three oh three that you have there, in the multifamily, is that incorporated inside of the memory care units, or those individual apartments? Because my, my, what I, what I worry about, I love this idea, I think this is a great idea, I think Saranby's a great idea, I've seen this work at other places. But what I'm concerned with is, I know developmentally-wise, you're gonna turn to apartments first, because they're gonna make the most money, the cheapest? first because they're going to make the most money that Jesus to build. You can fill them up, they're going to turn revenue. I know the 1,200 square foot homes you're going to build first because they're easiest to build, easiest to flip. Is there any way that any of that can be tabled or averaged out? That we will build only one multifamily for six personal, individual homes? We'll build, I know this is only 16, 2,800 square foot above, which generate the most revenue for the city. 27 are in that middle range, 119 in the one above that. Is there any way we can say, hey, we'll build 16 here versus one there versus five there? Is that possible, or am I-
I'm glad you asked a question, Mac.
Because finally, what I don't have, I don't want us to get started with a great idea, and we've seen it time and time again in this community, I've lived here my whole life, and to have a great idea and have it started and just not have it finished, and just end up with a, I call it Chernobyl effect, you've got a big empty lot, it looks like something's supposed to be there, but ain't nothing there.
Right. So, I'm glad you asked a question, and let me tell you what the plan is. That relates to phasing, how we intend to phase it over-
Maybe that's what I should ask.
And one thing that I want you to take note of, specifically in regard to that for the multifamily, what you're imagining multifamily, we have some, actually some fairly good examples within the city, just down the street from Liberty Chevrolet down Hickory Level, and then there's one behind the Walmart. They all look decent. They're all three-stack, community-accessed, regular-looking apartment building. That is not what we're doing. I don't know if you've seen how we relocated, and first of all, let me just make sure I delineate it. The independent, the life care piece is not included in that multifamily.
Okay, that's, I didn't think they were.
That's a separate number. So, the 300 multifamily units, as we have them designed, are a combination of townhomes, which would be, you know, a single stack, like two or three stories, townhouse, regular that you'd see in any United City around the United States. Second would be condos, which would be like apartments, but they're individually owned so that you wouldn't have that issue. And then the third section is actual apartments, and we've got a total of 303 of those, but they're split. So, each one of those buildings that you see in the multifamily blocks are blocks of 24 to 36. And then the individual wider, white blocks are townhomes, so there's a total of those, and they'll, the way that developments work is that you build the housing that will sell when it, when the economy suits it, right? So, our target price ranges in here are built to be affordable for the community as it exists today.
What is that price range?
So, we're going to be aiming on the bottom end in regard to the townhomes and some of the cottages, the smaller ones. So, there's some in there designed for like my sweet mama who's sitting right there, y'all be nice to her. She needs something about in the 750, well, 850 to 1,200 square foot range. She's not going to need for single living for herself a 2,000 square foot house. So, those will be on the, on the shorter end. On the upper end, in the 299 to 350 range, will be things that are more family-oriented. So, you'll have a, the way that these houses are intermixed within the community, Mac, to your specific question, there's sections, every section includes the spectrum of housing. So, there's not like the apartment people who are poor and can't afford to own a house live over there. We specifically design them within the community, so if you're a person who lives in this apartment at a market rate rent, you're a part of the community, not stuck off in the corner.
Because the reason I ask is we've seen this community, you know, years and years, we've had developments, first generation, oh, it's great, it's a starter home, starter home. Fast forward 15 years, and it's not, it's a rental community, and there, there's no ownership, there's no, not as much value in the property because it's all become a rental, and the rentals are owned by someone who lives somewhere else. And we, as a citizen, get stuck with the, the cost of that. The police, the fire, the upkeep, we get stuck with. That's the only thing that I would be, and again, that's probably more of a city council question than that, what I'm asking. I think zoning-wise, I think it's a heck of a good idea, it's a heck of a plan to put together, but that's the only thing I'm concerned with, is we end up getting a half-finished deal, and we have someone come in and doesn't follow through the plan, and then we're stuck with a place that we're not really proud of and have to pay for.
Right, so, I have a, a good answer for that, too. I hope you'll think it's a good answer. So, we have in place that we're setting up and, for the whole community, as a community, not just the individual section, a property owners association-
That's what I was just going to ask.
The amenities, the trails, the streetscapes and all of that stuff. So, that's going to be a monthly fee that comes from every property owner that belongs to it, and as you know, as an attorney, that we can assess those property owners' fees whether they're paying them or not. I'd love to foreclose on some of these 10 years from now, you know, because they, I'm kidding, I don't want to do that. The Property Owners Association will be there and in place, and I'll be a part of that for a long time to come. In addition to that, for the way that these buildings look, and this is an important feature of the way that we've designed this zoning, is that we'll have a design review board in place, so that even though I've already got it zoned, and that house on lot number 131 is supposed to be, you know, X, an 1,800 square foot house that fits on this 50-foot wide lot, we get to then determine that the plan that's submitted by the builder meets the standard, that it has the exterior that looks right, that it's not too far on the setbacks, that it's, there's no issues related to the rest of the community. So, the way that we've submitted this zoning book gives us that flexibility, but also that power.
Is it a five-year build-out? Is that what I read? Is that the plan, is it a five-year build-out?
Five years, yeah.
Okay.
It could be faster if things happen politically that kill it, and we could have another recession, but the challenge is that this stuff is still in place. So, those, those standards still have to be met regardless of the generation that owns it and works there.
This is an extremely well-thought-out and planned document, very impressive for this. You made a point about property owners association.
Yes.
Is that different than the design review board?
Yes, sir. So, the property owners association is a separate entity that controls the amenity space, the green space, and all the other things that it will own and maintain through the use of a monthly assessment on each property owner. The design review board is a, it's an advisory board that's headed by, well, me for now. At some point, it may be headed by somebody else, but the intent there is that board gets to review every single building, every single thing that happens within the community. It's a separate entity that is, that is a part of the property owners association, but is a separate entity. It will do it separately.
Very impressed with the designs that were shown, but will the lots be sold by Abimor, or will you sell these to independent contractors? How will that be done?
So, the intent is to, and you know, I have to go with intent here. The intent is to develop it myself, to build the housing myself, it's time, that won't mean that my construction company builds it all. It means that the design review board will review the plans that are submitted by builders that we think are acceptable for the community, that will build houses that meet these standards. That's the plan. I, I don't think I'm going to build all, in five years, it would be really tough for me to do that, I don't have that much money, but, which is an important point, by the way. This thing's going to bring almost $300 million in construction and development costs to the city, which is kind of a big deal. That's what's going to allow us to provide for the application for the TAD, where we try to pay for the new sewer pumping station, the upgraded lines and the other things that the city needs. That becomes available because of the density that we've put in this plan. And although it's dense, we still have over 51% green space and amenities, which is a huge amount for this kind of community.
Very impressive. But back to the financial, like-
Yes, sir.
How confident are you of the finances to develop this?
I'm glad you asked that question. I actually have letters of intent from people right now, ready to help me with money to develop all of the single-family and multifamilies. On another developer is interested in doing all of the medical with me in a joint venture. I have some folks with the National Church Residences, which is another group that does life care, they're interested in doing the whole life care piece with me. So, from a financial standpoint, it's not all coming from me. In fact, it's mostly all coming from others that are either joint venturing with me or buying sections of the community to help me develop under those standards.
Does that bother you?
No, as long as I have that design review board in place, I got control, so it doesn't bother me at all. And I don't think it should bother you, because the standards that are set in the design review board are all written down right here, every single one of them. So, you can see what's going to happen.
And who's going to build the streets and the sidewalks and the groves?
The master develop, the master developer will do that. Right now, that's me. I suspect as I joint venture out pieces of this, or if I develop it myself, it will be somebody that I'm involved with or somebody who's required to do it under their contract that meets the standards of the design review board.
So, what do you need from the city?
A zoning approval, and let me develop it with the zoning standards.
Now, you mentioned a lift station, do we, are we going to need to add another one, or just tie on to that?
Right now, according to the city, we have adequate water and sewer for this community. I think that the reason for the pumping station and maybe a force main and some other things are to help the city with future development on the west side of town, your annexation. These guys are going to want access to it at some point down the road. I don't think it's required for my community, but I'm willing to do that as a part of, as the TAD comes along that we apply for, and we hope the city works with us on to do so.
Question, if we wanted to go see one, I know you mentioned Serenby, and Serenby with most of the houses, I think, are higher-end than this. What, if we wanted to go walk and see one of similar to this, where do we go to see it?
I'll refer to my architect.
Because there's one, within reason. Road trip, everybody.
You could go to any number of communities. A lot of these are at higher price points, so you have to keep that in mind.
I understand.
Land plan is one thing, that product is something else, but the kinds of developments like this, you could see obviously Serenby, who's going to do it, Pinewood over in, in Fayetteville, and Vickery, which is up in South Forsyth County.
It is.
The earliest ones, it's about 20 years old.
Your Vickery's been there a while.
Yeah, it looks like when it grows out.
Okay.
So, those are these sorts of new urbanist lots, and that's a loaded term, I know, smaller lodge.
What's the one, Alpha Rata recently, the development they had there, largely?
Avalon.
Yeah, Avalon, is this just a mini Avalon, a little smaller, lower scale than that?
Yeah, Avalon's got a little bit different feel to it, but again, same, similar principles.
Because I've been to, like the, the Green and Brookhaven, they have the Green, what they've done kind of area in downtown Smyrna when they widened the road and took downtown Smyrna. Those are really friendly places to live, to walk, to spend money.
And that's the goal with all of this, is to make, you know, sort of the whole health, you know, care and, you know, walking is the number one thing you can do for your health, and to make them friendly down at the core levels, which we want to do. And so, everything that we've done in the plan is to try to enhance that personal experience of simply walking and living in the environment.
And that's why I was interested in the commercial development, because that is one of the things that, obviously, what do you get in your car to do? You get in your car to go to work, and you get in your car to come home, but then you get in your car to go to drugstore, you get in your car to go to grocery store, you get in your car to go to whatever it might be, the Dollar General, the Walmart, or whatever. But the idea is to walk, you've got to make at least some of those in some version available, I would think, would you not?
That's exactly right. We're going to have onsite, thank you, Robert, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
On-site, we're here, we'll have restaurants, we'll have a little general store. I'm working with one of my neighbors to, if Kroger doesn't come up on the corner, provide a general grocery-type store that's within walking distance of here, which would be literally adjacent on the, on this main street. We'd be able to, when you break your foot and you need to go to the clinic, you can go up either to the urgent care, the primary care doctor, or you can get on the shuttle that's going to Carrollton twice a day. You know, that kind of thing is going to be available for the residents at large, not just the residents in the life care community. So, that, the property owners association is going to provide access to everyone in the community with the same types of extended amenities that the seniors are going to get. If you want a meal plan, you're a millennial and you never cook, or you're somebody our age whose wife never cooks and you need food every night, well, by golly, you can go right up there to the cafeteria.
For the record, mine does, I won't make you do that.
Mine does not. If you're listening out there, Wendy, I love you, but the challenge is, people don't cook anymore. How do you have access to good food at a reasonable price? Well, you can buy you a meal ticket that belongs to the cafeteria, and you can go right up there and get your meal every night if you want to. So, we're trying to provide those kinds of community-wide amenities, not just to the seniors, but also to the community.
In the access, you mentioned, 61, is that again going to require support from GDOT?
Yes, sir, it is. It is. So, when we did the traffic study at Wilburn Engineering, they actually communicated with GDOT directly about those issues. That's when they came up with the, the main access with the curb cut that's already there across 61, and then the secondary one with Acel and Dcel lanes. They tell me that that's enough for the community as it stands. We have additionally provided, I got to pay for it, but I can get access through two of the neighboring parcels at the very least. We're providing a spur for some of our neighbors over here, over to, Mr. Montahan made it really clear that that was important for the people in his ward, so we are providing that spur. If they would like to use it, they'll have access through Charleston Place for our community as well, and at the very least, we'll provide them a footpath so they could walk over depending on what they choose to do on their end of it.
A golf cart path, maybe, since they're like-
We're totally down with that, man.
Problems we've had with GDOT?
Right, nobody controls what they do, as, as we know from the bypass around our city.
In the commercial area, is there adequate room there for large vehicles, semi-trucks or whatever to put around?
They're designed with service alleys. So, instead of like our downtown, or like downtown Carrollton where trucks, 18-wheelers pull up right beside the door and block the road, we've designed them with service alleys all the way throughout. In fact, all of the houses have access alleys, so that you're not backing into pedestrians walking around all over the place. There's one other thing I want to introduce, and then whatever other questions you have are fine. Right now, there's a water tower sitting up on the hill up there, and that water tower is now redundant because of the big Walmart, the one in front of Walmart now. I would like to introduce the concept of moving that water tower over either to another part of the property or getting rid of it altogether, and the reason is this. A, safety, right now, it's, it's barely fenced, it's isolated, and the city has to ensure it and maintain it.
It's attractive nuisance, is what I hear.
That's right. If I'm able to re- acquire that acre, we remove that, I'll put the observation tower that we've designed into this community, I'll move it up the hill, or down the hill actually, 100 feet, and I'll fence it, and I'll maintain it, and I'll secure it, and the folks who want access to that amenity, as it's designed now, you have to get out at one of the parking lots and walk up a steep hill to get there, which is great for folks who can walk. It's not so great for folks who can't walk. So, that if I can move that tower over, my tower over to where the water tower is now, I'd then be able to offer that amenity not only to my community, but the community at large. That's a consideration I'd like you to make, and you don't, I think it's more of a city council issue.
That'd be a city council.
But, yeah, I wanted to introduce it to you so you didn't feel like a backdoor job.
Well, I saw you marked it, I knew that tower, so that tower's still not part of this 220 acres.
That is not part. I own all of the other property to the west of it, and that's all in a conservation easement. It can't be ever brought out of green space. It's got trails designed into it for the community, and it will be made a part of
And there's access, I'm sure ingress and regress the city must have there as well.
Yes, and that's, that's that yellow road that comes right off of that circle-
Gotcha.
Up to the left.
I really like the designs that you've shown in here. Would you consider this to be like a historical design community?
You know, do you mind if I have my architect answer that? Because he is very clearly in charge of what our design looks like.
My name is Robert Pooley, and I'm a principal with Reinhardt Pooley, and we designed all of this. I believe the specific question was style of architecture. Yes, one of the things that we are very motivated with is architectural styles that have some basis in historical design. Now, that could be from 50 years ago, it could be a contemporary building from 50 years ago, but it's also designs that go out beyond that. And what we try to do is we research the kinds of houses that are in our area, and the context of, of, of these sorts of forms. And then we have to design those buildings, those houses, in the way that people live today. People live inside of those houses very differently than they used to. But very much, we are inspired by things like the farmhouse that's on site. It's a vernacular farmhouse, a good example, Victorian folk farmhouse. And in our guidebook, it's lifted elements specifically like that, so that you can come into this and you can see that we have just a couple, three styles of the stuff that's around here. we have just a couple, three styles of the stuff that's around here. There are general styles and one of them is southern vernacular style.
Well, they're very, they're very. But if as a builder, if I come in and I wanted to build something significantly different, you would control that through the-
That's right, the designer review board would do that. And as you can tell, my architects are very particular. They're very particular about what our look is gonna be and what the design's gonna be for the community. Mark, when you haven't asked a single question and I'm feeling like you're left out.
He's loving it, he's loving it.
This is designed for people of every income straight up and we think we can help provide housing for folks from market rate all the way up to, some of the houses are on really odd lots that are on really high spots. And if I can get you for half a million bucks on one of those, Mac, I'm gonna do that. But the rest of them are gonna be, you know, affordable and, and that's the design, is people who live here now can afford it. We're not trying to gentrify it, this is us.
Okay, any other questions?
How soon do you envision starting?
Well, I thought we were voting tonight and I was ready to start two weeks from now, after the city council voted. However, I understand that proper procedures have to be followed, so as soon as city council meets and we can get an approval, we are within hopefully 90 days of having a land use, a permit, land disturbance permit that we can begin to work with. Engineers are ready on that, architects are ready on that. We're probably a year out from actually physically moving dirt in a way that would be the community can look at and say, wow, look how, you know, that's probably a year out, because we have a lot of engineering to do.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
All right. Next up is-
The size of the maps.
The size of the maps, well, we try.
That's right. All right, next up is staff comments. You got any comments out there, staff? Oh, any staff comments? Really? They are floored, I can tell from up here, they're just flared. Okay. All right, next up is public comments. If a group wishes to speak, one person must be designated to speak for the group. Please sign the sign-in G with your name and address. All public comments are limited to 10 minutes. Any takers? Nobody's got nothing to say. Okay, going once, going twice. Public comment section is closed. Next up is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You have a motion?
Got a motion. And do I have a second? Have a motion, a second to adjourn, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. And a quick shout-out, we have a new member of our board here, Mac Pilgrim. He's right here. Y'all come up here, get his autograph. Awesome, awesome stuff. Hey, um, return this up here.
Well, I, the city may need it back to go to-
Yeah, what I was gonna say, because, yeah, I'm like, I'm cool with this.
Yeah, you can take it home and read it till midnight.
I can, I can, I'm like, I'm like-
Very nice job tonight. You have a lot to be proud of, so. Well, it's chosen, I mean this compared to what we saw in December. And, and it's really very impressive.
Well, we've already saved the end, you know, in our head, but now that's kinda like that.
Well, I think it'll, no reason to not think that it will move fairly quickly. Of course, you never know what happens when it gets to council, but-
No, you don't. Sometimes it just goes on.
Yes, a lot of times we do. Some of us do that.
Oh, yeah, right. Hi, I'm Pam Davis, I'm Dave Miller. She's trying to fix me a place to live, where I don't have to stand with his wife, you know?